This is, uh, okay. Welcome to the city council meeting for the city of Wairika. We're glad to see you all here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. If you have a cellphone, please turn it, uh, either turn the sound off or turn it off. Thank you. This is a time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of the meeting except to direct staff to prepare report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium right over here. State your name and mailing address so city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Anyone have public comments? Hi there.
Hi.
Welcome.
It's been awhile guys. Anyway, I'm Rhonda Richards, under the 1012 Cory Court in Wairika. And I'm Anne Perry, I live at forty-eight O'Nashaw Meyer Road. And it's good to see all you guys again.
It's been awhile.
It's pretty darn fast, except it has been awhile. So we thought we'd come back and talk to you a little bit about, that we're still interested in the pool maintenance issue. Remember that was what we talked about last time, so I, we're not dropping it. And just a little bit of an update on what we're doing. We are still looking at the possibility of evaluating Parks and Recreation District. And that's one thing we've got, as you know, because you guys all attended meetings and stuff, that people were pretty darn interested in it. So we are planning to conduct an initial meeting towards the end of October with some key community members from some key organizations that we feel might be interested in doing that. At that meeting, um, we will, our goal really is to do some more research on kind of what that means, also get input from these groups of people to see what it is that they are interested in and having done. So, um, that's kind of why we're here, is just to sort of say, this is where we are in the process and we haven't let it go away, even though it's beautiful, that's a cool river. And now we're back into the swing of things. And there, and we've already started contacting people that might be interested in, and they're actually, they're, they're all saying yes. So that means that it's, it's gonna be a, something that I think people will be interested in. So we don't want to lose the momentum, you know, we all took the moment, ready to prepare, with the mountains, whatever. Now we want to make sure we don't lose, because so many people were interested in the pool and the grant writing and all that stuff this summer. So we're hoping to keep that momentum going this fall. And hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a kind of plan in place. It's been kind of difficult to figure out the steps to take because the special district is kind of a combination thing between working with city staff and the county lab to process. And the state has regulations, so we've been trying to figure out all those things, meld them all together and come up with what we think our next steps will be. So hopefully we'll have something for you by, maybe January, we'll come back and explain a little bit more in depth, what we hope to be able to do and get your support for whatever. Something that has to be on the ballot or something, you guys might need to help us with some letters of support or whatever. And that's all, that was our little presentation.
When do you anticipate hearing on the grant application?
December.
December.
Yes, December.
Middle of December.
Yeah. And thank you all so much for all of your hard work. I mean, that was a lot of blood, sweat and tears. For, since what, February until August when we sent it in?
Yeah, that was a long, a long haul.
It was, but well worth it.
Yes, it is.
I feel, I feel like it couldn't possibly be any better.
Well, I haven't written a lot of grants since, yeah, it was a pretty strong grant and there was so much community support. I'm hoping that they understand that. Uh, so we'll see, yeah. We'll keep our fingers crossed.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Anyway, yeah, that's what we're, we're up to. And we just wanted to let you know so that you guys were kind of kept in the loop about it.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
You two are rock stars in my book.
Go girls, go girls.
So is Mary.
Oh, Mary, I see.
And Mary, yes. Mary, don't forget Mary. Okay, um, we have an item, um, that has, that came up after the agenda was set. If there's no more speakers at this time, I'll go ahead and ask, um, the council if you've had a, uh, if you've had a chance to take a look at it. City attorney is requesting to add an item to the agenda which came to the staff's attention after preparation and posting of the agenda. Um, the item being, quote, "Conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine E three regarding significant exposure to litigation and consideration of possible action on the application of Northwest Paving for relief of late claim received from Northwest Paving." City attorney has requested that this item be placed for consideration on this meeting's closed agenda item, uh, closed session agenda, on the grounds that the application came to the attention of the city after the posting of the agenda requires action the next city council meeting. I will entertain a motion that there is a need to take immediate action, that the need for action came to the attention of the council subsequent to the agenda being posted. This requires two-thirds vote of the council, or if less than two-thirds of the members are present, well, we're all present, then the unanimous vote of those present. If motion is made and carried, then it will be added to the agenda as next in order, actually, next in order on the closed session.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so, do I have a motion from the council?
I move that a conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine subsection E subsection three regarding significant exposure to litigation and consideration and possible action on the application of Northwest Paving for relief of late claim received from Northwest Paving be placed for consideration on this meeting's closed session agenda on the grounds that the application came to the attention of the city after the posting of the agenda and requires action before the next city council meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Question.
Question?
Um, I now see the city attorney here, whom we consider is not here.
We're going to conference call.
He's gonna conference in at the closed session.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Alrighty, uh, first item, discussion possible action consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or the audience, a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from September twentieth to October third, twenty nineteen. And B, approval of minutes for the meeting held September nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
I have to recuse myself from one A.
One A?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion, please.
Um, to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as presented with one exception.
Well, I can go on B.
Okay, okay.
Oh, you can vote on B?
Yes.
Okay, so this is just on?
On A.
On A. I'll make the motion for consent calendar part A.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second.
I think I'll second.
He's seconded already.
What were you looking for? Oh, okay.
All in favor.
Just saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Now that was item A, so item one B.
I'll make a motion on one B to approve it, passes.
Turn off your phone. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign if you oppose. Okay, motion, uh, item one B also passes. Okay, item two, discussion possible action, approve supplemental appropriation of fifty thousand dollars for municipal service center and kennel improvements. So is that you, Matt, or is that Steve?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, you will recall there was a, a concept to install a new transformer down by the municipal service center. To ensure we could pull enough power to operate the kennel now and in the future in its current, um, location. Uh, that number was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars on the Pacific Power side of things alone, plus we never really got a full number on what it would cost to pull it across the service center itself. So the idea came to staff that we may have available power at wastewater treatment. And that turned out to be true, it was really good news, and the, uh, we asked the electrical engineers of Pace Engineering to design it, spec it out, and come up with an engineer's cost estimate. That cost estimate came in at about twenty-eight thousand dollars. A little bit of extra dirt work in there, there's some staff time that would need to be added to that, but, so the number puts you, tonight I asked that we write it up as not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, which is still less than half of the option A that we were looking at. In my opinion, and in the opinion of the electrical engineers of Pace, this will continue to serve the animal control facility now and well into the future with the amount of power available. Um, it's just across the back fence, it's basically right out the back door from the kennel, that's where the six-foot fence is around wastewater plant. And we had an old process building that we removed from process a number of years ago, and just happened to find a two-hundred amp panel in it that was lit up and not firing anything, so the power's available.
I, I understand, we, we've heard that there actually were some, some problems there with, with not being enough power and with, with switches being, you know, going off because there wasn't enough power.
There's, correct, there's multiple benefit to this.
This will fix that.
While this is a animal control project, of course, Public Works would take the lead on something of this nature because this is what we do for a living, the police don't. So, um, that coupled with the, the fact that we are a little low on power in other areas of the maintenance service, the municipal service center. And, you know, I always confuse the municipal service center with, um, you know, us in Public Works, we like to call it affectionately, the yard.
The yard.
But there's really two facilities, there's actually three facilities down there, you know, we have the, the Public Works yard, we have the animal control facility, and then the entirety of the municipal services center, which is Fleet. So it's really that, the facility serves the entire city and all departments in every way, so, um, just wanted to clarify, this is not a, um, Public Works funded project, right? This is, we, we gained some benefits, so does Fleet, the entire city. It's a great project, I'll throw that out there. Um, and so, yeah, our recommendation was that you move to approve that supplemental appropriation, and that would set us up for phase two of the animal control.
Matt, this is, this is the same power that you spoke of several weeks back where you're, where you found the two-hundred amps to come in?
Correct.
Okay. And what, what do you think the cost, it says here fifty thousand, including, um, staff time. What do you, what's, what would be a highest spend on staff time? Ten thousand?
Under that.
Huh?
Probably five, if we were to move forward from now.
Okay.
But then there's work on the kennel.
Because the engineering has already been performed, regarding that engineering.
Debbie's been working a long time on this kennel.
Yes, and, thank you. Actually, I was surprised, pleasantly surprised to see that they were going to try to work out, um, some kind of improvement to maintain and control the heat for the winter. So I'm hoping with this increased budget that you'll be able to get those sliding panels or whatever you're gonna do before the weather gets too bad, is that correct?
Uh, that is my understanding of it, there were a number of, um, concepts there, some improvements, as you mentioned, the, some type of a plastic semi enclosure to keep some of the heat in the building. And of course, there's, and I'm not the animal control guy, but, um, I, I know, I've heard of, uh, concerns with parvo and it breeding in certain environments, so that would need to be looked at.
Yeah, you don't want it too warm.
Make sure we don't seal it all the way up.
Right.
But to hold some of that power in there, or the heat, the power, in, in would be great, um, so.
And, Madam Mayor, if I could point out, this is the perfect opportunity to promote the workshops, because we worked out the details of this at our first workshop.
Right. We did, and thank you for all your work on it. Appreciate that. And the chief is here tonight, too, and did you have anything to say about it? I know that the animal control is under your purview.
It is, um, Madam Mayor, we, uh, of course fully support the bringing of additional electrical resources in to the fact that in the summer it's not a huge problem, but in the winter, there's heaters for the kennels, there's water heater for the, for laundry, there's, you know, clothing washer, dryers, there's dishwasher, and you can see a small, I think it's a hundred amp panel down in town. Each of the, the kennels has got a large, uh, induction heater which draws a lot of power. And so as the kennels get full in the winter time, to keep the animals warm, we show off things like water heaters and dryers and turn the heaters on, and, you know, I mean, it's kind of a juggling game to keep that going. So the electrical would be a nice addition to be able to run everything at the same time, and if there's additional funds after, under that fifty thousand, if there's additional funds, we're looking at a few options to try and enclose somewhat, and, um, possibly change to a more efficient meeting and cooling.
Right, right. Perfect. It's, all those things are things that we've been discussing for quite awhile.
So Debbie, you've been the one?
Yeah.
Who's looked at this with the closest eye. Does this, I'm looking at the, it says electrical and minor improvement work. Let's see, um, some, some useful improvements that should be done to the kennel itself, it's feasible, are installing plastic semi enclosure and climate control. Is that, is that, was, is that the extent of what you have found needs to be done in your?
No, we could use a new facility, but the budget, current budget that we have, it's not on the table right now until we can pull a rabbit out of our hat.
So the current facility couldn't work in any, can't work in any manner?
No, it absolutely can.
It, it can't be remodeled or done on the inside?
It absolutely can. I actually, out of my own pocket, paid to have some plans drawn up to make suggestions on that. So yes, it can, but we'll probably have to do a temporary fix until we can find funds.
Find the funding.
But the location, there's nothing wrong with the location because, um, actually it's not around, close to a residential area. Uh, we worked out a way so that it's more accessible to public egress and ingress, that kind of thing, so, um, it, it's a good location. But the building is old, it isn't up to code, um, and hopefully in the future, maybe we'll have a benefactor, somebody really, really nice. But this will keep them safe and warm, that's been number one priority.
Yeah, definitely.
And I'd like to add for, uh, for Councilmember McCoy and Barrett, that any improvements that we do make, or that we, before we make any improvements to heating and enclosures, we'd like to, um, make sure that there's something that will go along with future improvements, not something we're gonna install, use for a little while, and then say, oh, we need to make the bigger, better. We like to, um, either use heat pumps or something that is a size and configuration that will go along with future improvements.
Great.
Thank you.
So you'll bring that back?
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions?
Nope.
Okay, I would accept a motion.
I think it needs to be.
Oh.
Since it's more appropriate coming from you.
Okay, where's the written text? Okay. Um, I would like to move that we approve a supplemental appropriation of fifty thousand, up to fifty thousand for municipal service center electrical and kennel improvements.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Very good. Go forth then.
Thank you guys.
Okay, item number three, discussion possible action, authorize city manager to negotiate changes to the city agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Baker?
Yes, Mayor members of the council, um, the chamber, who are well represented here tonight.
Where's the president?
Has been.
There she is, she's over there.
Has been reviewing its fiscal situation and contacted me to say that they may have to cut back on the number of days that they're open for business to the public. And so they requested a discussion of the impacts on their agreement, because obviously the agreement has five days a week open for tourism. Uh, the chamber does expect to be able to fill its, and I've been in insurance meeting all morning, so, let me start over. The chamber expects to still fulfill its obligations under the agreement for putting out events. The item, I've given you a recommendation, which is to authorize, uh, the city manager to negotiate changes to the city agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. The alternative would be to appoint a subcommittee of the chamber to work with the chamber, subcommittee of the council to work with the chamber. And, uh, if you'd like, the chamber is here and might want to, uh, talk about what's going on.
Sure, we'd love to hear from them. If you'd like to speak on behalf of the chamber. Come on down, Amanda. Good evening.
Good evening, hello. Um, so pretty much when I called Steve, what we're doing is we are reviewing our financials and, um, since I have been in this position, I have went over our budget several times and noticed some possible errors from discrepancies, thank you, from, um, past eighties, I suppose you could say. Um, and so we are reviewing our situation and trying to figure out what is going to work best for the chamber. Um, the, having a few days closed was one of the options, um, it's just one of the options for that. Can you?
Continue, pass, Steve.
Oh, okay, alright, all good. So, um, that was one of the options, would be just to have the office closed one or two days a week. The other option would be employment, so staffing, layoffs.
Employment.
Layoffs of some, of some.
How about volunteers? I know that Ashland, um, has people volunteer, the man, people that used to live here in Wairika now go up there and volunteer, you know, once a week, once a month, whatever. Have you considered that?
Um, yes, I mean, we would love to get volunteers. Um, we even tried to pay, um, as you know, for the weekend, and we could not find anyone that wanted to take the job. So we went through personal preference, and they had no leads on that specific.
I'll interject. One of the things we're trying to look into is an internship program through COS, and also a program through the high school for job shadowing. We're gonna look into that, um, for possibly the one or two days off that we would have to do, um, if that, if it comes to that, we're gonna look into that possibility, um, as far as a volunteer, no pay situation if it comes to that. Volunteers are hard to come by these days, but it's an option.
I don't know, Joan and I are working ourselves to death on this volunteer stuff.
Yeah.
It's the same people.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what executive director you're talking about, but when I was there and Lynn Bay was there, and I think Debbie was there, we did have a lot of volunteers. So I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about, if you want to care to be more specific.
Um, I, I think it should be discussed in a private meeting.
Right, I can definitely be very specific.
Okay.
I would rather be not in a public forum.
Okay. Okay, sounds like we need to set up a workshop then.
A workshop, or was Steve?
Well, he was, he was wanting the authorization for him to negotiate it solely.
Or a committee.
I'd say it's, needs to be a combination, myself.
I agree.
Yeah, I'd like to know a little more before, before we decide. I'd like for the council to know a little more, however we do it.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
I think Steve ought to negotiate first and then bring anything back to the council.
That would work, that would be quicker, probably.
Right.
Less cumbersome.
Yeah, Steve work with the chamber and see what's agreeable, and then bring it back to the council.
Well, I don't think we're talking, talking about negotiations, though, we're talking about finding out right now, we're just all finding out what's.
How to keep them going, they're going broke.
Conversation with us, and you know that time is of the essence as far as we're concerned, and you've, you've heard from us.
Is, if I may?
Sure.
Are one of the options on the table to alternate two days a week for, um, one of you and then three for the other, kind of thing? Depending on the funding?
It was definitely something that we looked over financially, if that would make a big enough difference for us.
And also ten to five rather than nine to five?
Right.
Kind of thing?
That would not make a big enough difference. That is a very good suggestion, though. It needs to be quite substantial.
I just can't imagine, um, not having the chamber open, especially during key seasons, like during summer season. Winter's a little slower.
Yeah.
But that's the reason I suggested that volunteers, you know, maybe get people to volunteer to help out. I just hate for us to, to lose that, you know? I mean, I already see people going up and down the street, peering in the windows after five, you know, not just there, but I mean, all the businesses. So I would really hate not to have somebody there to, you know, to give people advice, to show, tell them where to go, or if they have questions to answer, um, unless we do something like what Mount Chastis does, and they have all of their, they have pamphlets outside when they're not there, but, um, I do think it's something that needs discussion.
The, one of, just as, well, you mentioned pamphlets outside, and that is one of the, um, best practices to have for visitor centers, is to have a way where even if there's not someone there, because clearly on Sundays, and actually Saturdays, this year so far, nobody's there after five. And so one of the best practices that has been suggested, and, um, the tricky part is that sometimes everyone, somebody wants to take all of your brochures and use them for, I don't know, paper airplanes or something like that. So it's, it's, but anyway, so there might be something there that we could do, it might look a little weird on the front of the building, but we, we could work that out.
Well, there's an alcove there, too, and that whole wall could be.
An option for that.
Does it go in far enough, or, the doors are?
It does.
It does, I mean, and that back wall and that alcove is actually a pretty, pretty spot that we could put things in.
Yeah, if it's, if it's back far enough, then that'd be an option.
Yeah, that's an option.
I just wanna make sure the wheelchair, do not get, get me in trouble with my building department.
There's plenty of room there.
Okay, so something like that, but, but done in such a way so that the, the chamber's not, you know, putting out brochures and then they all disappear.
Well, there's, whether it's in an alcove or not, I think that that's.
Put out a limited amount.
Limited amount, yeah.
I, I think we need to look first at.
Options.
I think we need to know what options are there, and what, what, what has not worked and everything, and then, first.
So I was just doing the math on that, you know, as far as losing a day, fifty-five, you talk, fifty-five, um, weeks in a year, and you're talking one day, you're looking at eighty-eight hundred dollars, approximately eighty-eight hundred dollars, it's just up savings on one day at a whole year. So, uh, there's a little bit of money there, that's, I mean, fifty-five hundred dollars is a big chunk of money, but it's, is that in the big picture, I don't know where that falls.
And eleven to five, instead of ten to five, or nine to five, maybe eleven to five?
Yeah, I'm just.
And, and also, can I have a clearer definition on what the, um, city is paying for, because we're talking about the Chamber of Commerce, when our interest is the tourist information? So I'd like a little more clarity on how our money is divided up and that.
Well, it's, um, so what we have written in the contract is, um, is that, it says the, it says operate and staff the tourism information center in conjunction with the chamber office. So notice both, both things happening there. Contractor will maintain office hours of nine AM through five PM, Monday through Friday, recognizing occasionally the office may not be staffed due to a variety of reasons such as illness of employees, meetings, lunch, et cetera.
This is the current one, correct?
That, that's what we have, so, um, if I'm interpreting your question correctly, and I may not be, um, you're saying, because the, the chamber obviously is not just doing tourism business, they're also doing chamber business during that time. And it is a little hard to parse through what that would, would do, so it's more, what's the impact that we think it happens, and by we, I mean.
All of us.
All of us, um, has on the tourism information, um, center, are there other ways to do that? So, um, so I can certainly meet with the chamber and have already. They, I wanna point out that they've been very, um, first of all, very forthright in bringing it up, uh, wanting to get it, um, solved early as opposed to letting it, it fester. I think that, that's, um, that's great, you know, that we can deal with it, you know, kind of deal with it on a timeline, that's, but they need some answers fairly quickly. So I can meet with them. Our workshop schedule is, the next one's on October tenth, for a variety of reasons, with meetings that I have.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. I don't know that we would have anything more than a cursory meeting before then.
Right.
So, the next workshop date, if, if you're thinking that I would talk to them and then we would go to a workshop would be November fourteenth. The next council meeting is.
That's not fast.
That's not fast.
That's not fast.
Yeah.
We might have to do a special.
So, that's why I'm kind of, you know, sort of working through.
And then the one after that's the twenty-fourth.
The tenth and the twenty-fourth.
We don't have one.
We, we don't have one on the twenty-fourth.
No, we did do that.
We just did, we're doing it once a month, so the tenth is the workshop. We're not trying to take every one of your Thursday nights.
Yeah, my point is that if we're going to have another one and we need a special.
Yeah, if they need it quick, they need it quick.
November fourteenth is.
So, we're gonna have to add another meeting.
Oh, I see, you're looking at.
A month and a half away, I'm looking at a way to bring it back.
You're looking at the October schedule and saying, should we have a special workshop?
On the twenty-fourth.
To discuss, okay. Alright, so we'll coordinate with, with the council's schedules, because I know that you don't all have them in front of you?
Yes.
Shoot for, I, I don't.
I do.
But collectively, so, do you want me to shoot for four o'clock on that Thursday workshop with all of you? And if that, that time doesn't work.
Oh, you mean, we tend to.
For a workshop on the twenty-fourth of October.
And then they'll, they'll be in. They'll come in and talk. Because Joan. We've got some people gone, so this is.
I'm on a calendar.
I'm gone to London.
For us blind people, you can't read that far.
Yeah.
Did I put one in your binder? Usually I put one in your binder.
No.
So, so let's. Shall we?
Not sure that helps.
Shall we schedule that or tentatively schedule that? I mean, it works for my schedule, how about the rest of it?
I, may I make a suggestion, so we don't have an extra night of meetings?
I know.
If Steve does his homework with them, we can meet an hour before our next city council meeting, discuss it and possibly vote on it at that night on the seventeen.
Two people are gonna be gone, Steve and Mayor John.
Both are gonna be gone next city council.
I have to go vote for the city of Wyreka at the League of California Cities.
And Steve will be gone also.
Never mind, never mind.
So, the, yeah, so the next one, the, the twenty-fourth would be the next one.
Okay.
If that works for.
So, when we meet on the twenty-fourth, that's when they'll all, they'll give us, they'll give us background. The chamber will give us background as a council also.
And Steve will admit with us.
Yes.
So, that means that the next possible vote wouldn't be until following city council meeting?
The first one in November.
It's November.
Yeah, it's formal.
Yep. So, what do you think?
Well, I mean.
Is that acceptable?
I mean.
Well, I don't know what their timeline is.
Well, I don't know, I don't really know enough to know what.
I know, that's the problem, is we don't.
Without knowing what's going on with them or anything, I don't, I'm not comfortable.
I don't know the year.
Making a decision, yeah, on any.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put it, we'll confirm it all on the twenty-fourth at four o'clock with you.
Okay, that's tentative.
Well, I'm sure I'll be here, I think I got a tax class out of town that day.
Oh, dear. Well, it's a workshop, so it definitely won't need a vote. There's no vote that says.
In the meantime, I will meet with the chamber and try to figure out some of the questions that you will want answered and come up with the answers to the questions.
And if they're gonna speak, because she, they don't wanna share in a public meeting, how are we gonna get around that with?
You may not be able to.
Yeah.
We may not, you mean, they'll have to, they'll have to talk about it in a public meeting.
Our workshops are not recorded.
And they're not well-attended either, so.
And we don't, and.
They do have public here, though.
We, sometimes we, we do have public here, but the point is it's not out on television and there's no votes that are made. It's welcome to be open to the public, but it's a way to discuss things that we wouldn't discuss.
Right.
We're, we're transparent, I mean, we, we can say it here, but it's really not gonna speed anything up because the vote's still not gonna happen tonight anyway, so it's still, the way I see it, it's not gonna happen until November anyway.
Well, right, but, but this would give us the opportunity to discuss it at the workshop.
How, how much are you looking to save dollar-wise?
Yeah, that's what I guess.
How much are you looking to save?
At the, the wages of an entire employee.
How mu, what, give me, give us a dollar amount.
Oh, my God. There you go.
Give us a dollar amount, thirty-six thousand, forty thousand?
Around thirty thousand.
Okay, and what's your total budget?
Well, we give them fifty-five plus the rest.
But what, what's your total budget?
I mean, it is always changing because of membership, let's just say eighty-three.
What's that?
Eighty-three thousand.
Can you share that? Do you have a copy of the?
And you have more than one full-time person?
Two.
So, wow, okay.
And the membership's been declining, that's part of the problem.
Yeah, well.
And it was declining, we have brought probably a few thousand dollars more this past year, but that's not really substantial enough to make a difference.
Volunteers may be the only answer.
Yeah.
Yeah. For part of the least.
And how do we find this?
Have you tried the newspaper or the radio?
Yep, PSA.
The radio doesn't have anybody speaking on it anymore.
They don't?
Kevin doesn't. Kevin doesn't.
Yes, somebody needs to tell me these things.
Where have you been, you're supposed to know these things.
Weathermen.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for sharing that. You guys need to tell me these things.
Everybody knew that.
Okay, I think that we're, Steve's going to meet with them before the twenty-fourth and we're going to have a workshop on the twenty-fourth.
Right, so the, so, so that there's an action here is that essentially you are requesting that the city manager set up a workshop where we can discuss this.
But in the meantime, you talk more about it, so we can streamline?
I'm just trying, I'm trying to get for what the minutes.
Ah, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, an action and a meeting with, with them at the workshop.
Wait a minute, I think he's looking for a motion.
Correct, I am looking for a motion.
I understand that, but if, how, how specific does it have to be?
Doesn't have to be very specific.
So, we wanna have a workshop to discuss it?
Right.
But we're gonna have him.
Well, that's what I was saying, we need to have them here, but if we don't need that, if we don't need that, we just invite them and.
Okay, well, just because we have it on, on the agenda, we ought to say something.
We still gotta say something, because of agenda.
Here's what I would, I would say. Mayor, I'd suggest that you say that the consensus of the council was to have a workshop.
And have you meet with them?
Yeah, you can put that in there, too, yeah.
Okay. So.
Liz is gonna do her magic.
It's the consensus of the council to have the city manager, Steve Baker, meet with the chamber, have a discussion and then come back on, prior to November twenty-fourth, and then we'll have a workshop.
No, it's the consensus of the council to have a workshop regarding.
And no meeting?
Budget of.
He, yes.
Yeah, the meeting doesn't, I mean, Steve can do whatever he wants outside of.
He can gather information.
Yeah, outside of this, yeah.
Okay, gather, go forth and gather.
I understand the direction on that part, I just thought that we.
And he's gonna have them come back, so.
Other than.
Okay, what he said.
So, really, there's nothing for us to do?
Oh, yeah, on the twenty-fourth.
Well, there's no motion on this thing.
No, the consensus.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Liz, you wanna read back that consensus?
Consensus of the council to hold a workshop to discuss the Chamber of Commerce contract to be held ten twenty-four at four PM.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you. You don't need us at all, do you?
Nope.
Only for, you know, for Malin. Okay.
Do they have something to add?
There might be a need for a special meeting, so would you consider a special meeting versus a workshop?
No, we want to have open discussion. I, I mean, that's my opinion.
Okay, describe the difference between a special meeting and a workshop. Special meeting you vote at, but can you have discussion?
We can always have discussion.
They're both special meeting, number one, they're both special meetings.
Right.
You can only vote on an action item that's put on the agenda, so if you wanna take an action, you have to put it on the agenda as an action item.
Okay.
We don't know enough at this point in time and I'm not comfortable putting it on as an action item because we don't know enough about it. Without, without hearing more from them, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that.
Sounds bad.
Well, it's.
Okay, Steve, you guys got it figured out?
We're working it out.
Sorry, Liz.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I was working out a date while you were talking, so if I missed something, I apologize.
No dating allowed during council meetings. I'm just kidding. Okay, so you guys have a working out a date to meet.
Yes.
We're going to have a workshop. Paul wanted to know, no. Debbie wanted to know if we could have an action item on.
No, actually, what I asked was the difference between a workshop and a special meeting. So, I'm good, Liz explained it.
Okay.
Or edited. The voice came from over there.
All right, very good. So, thank you, we have.
Let's work together.
We have direction.
Let's work together to, you know, to, to figure things out.
We need to know when the workshop is?
Ten twenty-four at four o'clock.
Ten twenty-four.
Ten twenty-four.
Four o'clock here. Alrighty, thank you. Okay, I think that's the last item, I think we go into a session now.
No.
Nope.
We got one more? Oh, city managers' reports, staff reports, don't leave, too. And that.
Mayor, I'll be brief, the only things that I was going to bring up were some of the items on, that we're looking at for the workshop on the tenth. One, as I mentioned before, is the Carnegie Building. We're going to show you a draft RFP and really figure out what we're going to do on that. We need to have a discussion about the, I call it the vac truck and garage, it may, I'm not sure what the agenda title will actually say, but, but basically the strategy with the vacuum truck. And, because we, basically, we need to buy one and, but we need to explain what we're doing and it's just a little bit more complicated than just a normal agenda item. We had talked at the last meeting about the trigger for the, for development.
Bye, guys, thanks.
Bye.
Bye.
We had talked about the trigger for development and as the city attorney reviewed the ordinance, he said, wait a minute, there's been some case law that we need to take into account on other parts of that same section of the code, so we're going to talk about that and we will have the city attorney here to talk about that, so there'll be an ordinance discussion. We will be also looking at some guidelines for events and what that specifically is to talk about. We kind of do a, I always wanna call it a post-mortem, but we. But we, we try to do it.
Trying to tell us something?
After action, no, I'm not trying to tell you anything. An actua, after-action review of events, usually right after the event and then we try to do it every, in late fall, but it doesn't always, always happen. For the most part, the events go pretty much the way that they run before, but there've been some things that came up this year that there were some comments on, so I thought that we should review that. I will tell you that one of those things is to talk about the stage, but we aren't ready to talk about the stage, so probably just say, we still have some work to do on that.
Wait a minute. Okay, are we all right? There was some interference.
Okay. And then, oh, she's not here. That was the chief interfering? Okay, we're gonna have a workshop on chief interference.
Tonight.
The, the other thing that, and I have not talked to Robin and Ann about it, but I knew that they were coming this evening and I had, and thought I knew what they were going to say, but, because one of these times.
Ann and Mary, she was just sitting.
And Mary, right. But we probably need to talk about the strategy for the pool and park long-term revenues.
Parks and re.
Right, this may not be the time to do that at this point, given where they are, but there are some things that we need to talk about, so the pros and cons from the city perspective on a district versus a special assessment and I, I feel like I shouldn't really talk about it without, you know, Rob. So, anyway, we'll, we'll work that out, but that, given their time schedule, we'll probably push that to another workshop.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So.
That'd be good.
Anyway, that's, that's what we have, that should be a rather robust workshop. And one of the things that I think that you're noticing is that these workshops are working pretty well at getting at least things moving off of dead centers so we can bring them back to, for action items. It has resulted, interestingly enough, in a few less things on the agenda of the regular meeting, but I think we're, it's better handled than this. When we get to December, because we'll be used to having a workshop, we may wanna have a mini workshop or something like that instead of not having one, but we'll talk about that.
I'll bring cookies.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'm writing that down.
I'm a non-alcoholic beverage.
And.
Non-alcoholic.
I've been here today, are there any other reports that?
Oh, yes, I was gonna ask Matt and Chief. Matt, did you have anything else to say?
Yes, I would want the council to know that last week I spent commuting back and forth to Redding, meeting with the District Two engineers that were in charge of getting the Wyreka Rehab Project to ninety-five percent plant. And so, it, just really quickly, because it was a five-day meeting, they call it a value analysis. We came up day one with sixty-six different ideas to implement into that project. The nice thing about the value, the VA they call it, which just confuses me.
Oh, yeah, it's not the real VA.
Yeah, they call it a VA, but the value analysis process, they brought in engineers and stormwater folks and, you know, the types of folks that would be on this project, but they purposely pull in people that aren't from the outside, fresh eyes to look at it, and I was invited to be on the team and of course I went with the intent of my presence to get our concerns of our underground infrastructure to the forefront of everybody in that room. It seemed like it worked because when we presented as a team to the, the decision-makers at Caltrans on that Friday morning, the first bullet on the list was the largest concern was the city of Wyreka infrastructure, so.
Good.
It's a twelve million dollar issue to fix.
That's what I'm concerned about.
But it's in the forefront of that and probably, it sounds like we'll be making some trips down Sacramento to talk to some legislators.
Good.
And Steve will be talking to you, Madam Mayor, about that. There, we have to find the funding and the projects are feasible without funding, so they're, they are concerned as I.
May I ask you a question? Of course. So, did you discuss with them the fact that we don't have it, which would jeopardize this thing?
Yes.
Happen, okay.
Yes, that was my primary reason for driving to Redding.
Okay. And the whole project is what value?
Seventy-five million dollars escalated from a fifty-four million dollar budget, I believe.
And our share is twelve million.
Ours is on top of that.
On top.
On, on top of, there's seventy-five, it's been escalated to seventy-five.
Well, that, that's more than our whole budget.
Right, so we, I spoke at length about that, I just wanted you to know that, that we were represented in that meeting, we are part of the process and I'm not gonna stop until we get this figured out.
Thank you.
And it's still not gonna be easy.
No, you went down Monday, didn't you?
I went down Monday and Friday, so I was there at the beginning. I will say that the, I didn't sit through all of it, but Matt gave me a longer recording of what you're talking about and I also saw on Friday the, the results. It was a fascinating process to watch it get set up. It was, I looked at it as a tool for discussing rather freely all the different things and so, we're, we're looking at it and saying, huh, how could we use something like that in our process? Even though there was some weird things that they did in terms of the equation they set up at the beginning and all that sort of thing, but.
Well, it sounds serious, so.
They, they were very serious about looking at all of the different items. I think it was a good, it was a good analysis. Of course, we hoped at the end they would simply say, yeah, we'll write the checks for all that. That didn't happen.
That didn't happen, yeah.
But at the same time, I think that it was very, very clear that, you know, we don't have, we don't have the funds to do it and it is the, I called it the rhinoceros in the room instead of the elephant.
Rhinoceros.
Well, it's something about the, the large horn on the front of the rhinoceros.
Rhinoceros is more dangerous.
Yeah, the elephants are a little bit more friendly than what, anyway. But I can tell you that they really listened to Matt.
Great, good job.
Represented as well.
Thank you.
Okay, is that, that's twelve million dollars worth, that's enough?
That's all I have, that's all I could think about.
So, Chief Kamash, you have anything you'd like to share with us?
There is, I'll just briefly go over it, and I'll talk more about it at another meeting, but along with Steve and Matt, I too have spent a lot of time on the road to Sacramento and in Redding, meeting with California Department of Justice over their preliminary decisions, possibly pull their support from our Narcotics Task Force that has been here since nineteen eighty-four.
Really?
They're citing budgetary issues and other things, so myself and the sheriff have pretty much called everyone in the state that we could possibly think of that could bolsterings for us or help keep support from California DOJ and our Narcotics Task Force. And we've been given a tentative first-of-the-year date that they would pull that support, but that gives us a few more months to continue trying to work on that, so a lot of our respect, don't have.
Alright, well, let us know if we can do anything to help, or talk to anyone. We have kind of a little bit of an awkward situation. We've got a new senator, but we don't, we no longer have an assembly member. Until November.
Until November.
But however, there are, we do have friends in the legislature that we can talk to.
And I think we're going to need to do that on both of these issues.
I'll be happy to help, any way I can.
And Redda, I didn't catch up with you, did you have anything you wanted to bring up this evening?
Liz?
No.
Paul?
I wanted to say that I enjoyed the, the closure of Minor Street and the body painting and the Cuban, the Cuban.
Art show.
Art show, the Lisa Hansen from Los Angeles arranged, and really, really nice. But it looks like the truck stop is putting up their steel, they put up their, their main stringers, and now they're putting up the steel framing members, and it looks, and Ford looks like they've doubled their size. I mean, it looks great, so it's really nice to see that, that stuff going on in the city.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Really, and the Chevron station.
Hopefully it'll get finished.
Oh, yes.
I see, I get January first to the seventh, it'll be open.
Yeah, I went to the Fire Safe Council, it was last week, and they're gonna, one of the persons is gonna make a presentation, one of our future council meetings, on the Wairega Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which is using GIS update on the whole area around and the general, not just Wairega, but the surrounding areas, and it's got, it's broken into like surrounding, a couple miles around where there's more fire danger, stuff like that, so it's really interesting, they're working on it. It's partially funded by CalFire and stuff like that, so they're not final yet, but they want to bring it to the council and present it.
May I ask a question on that?
Of course.
Actually, I was thinking about Oak Ridge again, and is the Wairega Fire Safe Council in any kind of discussion with the owners of that park for another entrance-exit area from the back?
There already is one.
There is one now.
At the back.
They did a second one.
Did they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there was actually quite a bit of, of discussion and work around.
We discussed it.
We did, where was that?
It would, it might have been a little bit more under the radar for a little bit, but what we were looking at is, is number one, trying to, you know, there, there, you can't have exits everywhere. Some of, some places work, some places don't, but to improve the exiting and then also deal with the buildup of brush. And a lot of that had been done. When we went up there, it was actually in better shape than I feared, just because.
Oh, you had a site visit?
Yeah.
Actually, you went all around the town, right? They're looking at.
Okay.
Well, actually, there were two different site visits, yeah, but actually, staff went, so I, I wasn't alone, I had a lot of staff with me, going up there and looking at, you know, where are we at, where are the, the fire breaks, what was the mobile home park actually doing? Because they were in the midst of actually doing things on their property as well, looking at what had been done before. Kind of at, there's a, there's a few places where there's probably more brush than you'd really want, some of it's very close to the front gate, because that property owner wasn't interested in participating, and then there's a little bit more, there's a roadway, well, yeah, calling it a roadway is overexempt. There is something that looks like it used to be a roadway that now you would not take an automobile down there, maybe a quad, and very carefully between, basically to the west of theirs. But then there's a lot of brushy stuff on the, on the other side. So anyway, we, we looked at it quite a bit, and I think that the discussions resulted in people doing things, so. But I feel better about it, that was an area that we were concerned, but it is an area.
We were concerned about it.
I couldn't go with Matt.
Were you invited to go, I hope?
He went with the Chiefs.
Okay.
With the fire chief and with the battalion chief and, yeah.
Great, thank you.
The fire guys. You know, but it might be a bad idea in the future for all of us to go, it could be a field trip.
Yeah, we could, we could have a, a field trip out there. I just wanted to point out that, you know, there's a bunch of different efforts going on, but the, the cool thing about what Norm brought up, at least the way I understand it, is that they are going to be working intensively in that immediate area right at the edge of our city limits, and that's something that we've been trying to focus on, and so anyway, I'm, I'm excited that, first of all, they, I heard a little bit about it, not as much as you did, but that they're, they're actually focused on that. I want to get out my little drone and take it.
Yeah, well, some of it's the first thing that could even happen is next spring.
Exactly.
It's too late for this year already, Gavin, so, anyway.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so where are we? Debbie, it's your turn.
Oh, I'm just. Okay, there's no Lola meeting this month, but I also forgot to tell you last time, I'm now Chair, uh, LaFco.
Oh, LaFco.
And I even have it written here.
Chair of LaFco, congratulations.
No LaFco meeting, and I forgot to tell you, I'm Chair of LaFco.
Congratulations and condolences.
Yeah.
Yeah, and condolences.
We've got some pretty challenging issues on the.
Yes, you do.
Calendar coming up. I wonder if Lisa did that on purpose.
Don't think about it too long.
No, there's also quite a bit of turnover right now in, in that, so we're all gonna be learning together, and I, yes, as long as everybody's patient, I'm okay with it, but nobody else stepped up. The C two C met on the twenty-fourth at the Hilo and Weed, and actually, I was speaking with Lori, and she invited Grace and Rennie to speak at the Lola meeting. So they will be talking about.
Who did, oh, Lori did?
Lori did.
Grace and who?
Rennie, Cleveland's, I'm sorry.
To speak about what?
C two C, Collier.
Oh, just talk about Collier.
Mm-hmm, and the benefits and the contributions from the city and how the money's being used, blah, blah, blah. Oh, I was also gonna ask if any of you want me to report back on the visitation numbers for the C two C. I hate to use the whole word, that just takes so much out of my mouth. If you want numbers, let me know, otherwise, I'm not going to bother bringing them. There's lots, one point nine million a year. If you want me to break it down per month, I will.
One point nine million people that sign up as they go through?
No, that come into the facility, and that's Caltrans numbers.
Oh.
It's amazing.
It is amazing. That's what astounds me. We are the front door to the county, and we, that area is not being used for the advertising it should be used for. But if I thought a tourist would use my window coverings, I'd be there, for sure. Okay, the other thing I wanted to point out, I know you all know that I go to Greenhorn a lot. I think we should have a discussion on when that closes and have it, and, and consider, because at eight o'clock at night, it's, it's seven-thirty now and it's dark.
In the summertime, it's light, and right now it's, I, I, I thought it said at dark. Does this sign say at dusk or dark?
The gate closes at dark.
Gate does.
Gate, okay.
We're, we're gonna have to.
I took a picture of it, because, because the signage, we all just have our own ideas on what it reads, but perhaps maybe giving them permission to lock the gates at dusk, because I won't be there at this hour anymore, that's for sure.
Oh, it's too light and there's bears.
Yeah.
And other things.
And I am in my new shop, come see me.
Looks wonderful, I walked by it.
Oh, thank you. Did you see the woodworking stuff?
Looks wonderful.
Isn't that cool? John Hasmeyer puts it in there, but that's it, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Not much, I just, actually, I have a question for Matt. I got an email from Little League on the lower park saying that there's, the sprinkler's been capped off, and they haven't been, they've been hand-watering, is that something that's on the radar to get fixed?
It's fully on Ben's radar, he's taking care of it internally at the staff level.
Oh, okay, good, good. It's just like, concern is like, man, we can't let the field dry up and get screwed up, it's.
This is the time of year the irrigation gets turned off anyway.
I was concerned more about freezing if, you know, if there was water leaking, yeah.
There's some ironing out to do between the city and Little League.
Yes, again.
They, they put it in.
Huh?
They put it in.
We, we don't have control over that sprinkler valve to the infield, on the T-ball field, which is the one that, that's.
Yeah, I'd like to have, I guess we'll need to have a little meeting on some of this, you and I, because I guess I'm, I'm getting one report and, and then now another report, so yeah, something enough to sit down.
Just come on in.
Confusing information.
Just come in, yes.
Well, I know, yeah, in my spare time.
In all your spare time. And Wayne is the chair, and you're still going to remain the chair, right, officially the chair of the, to skew.
Homelessness Coalition.
Homelessness Coalition, and it's legal now, we've had kind of an informal group before, but now, in order to get the funding, we have to have a.
Legal meetings and all the, well, official meetings, I should say, not legal, official.
Vote in everything, our chair.
So what is, is, is it a joint powers, it is, is it a, what makes it legal?
Well, it goes, okay, the funding comes from the state of California.
This is education, not challenging education.
State of California, and it comes from, you can tell if you want, but from the feds.
Well, yeah.
But it comes through, it's a, a regional thing that comes through Shasta County.
Right, continuum of care of Shasta, is what it is, continuum, continuum of care, and it's that's.
So it's a board, an official board?
We actually have, it will be.
We have a member, or two members now, on the official board, which meets in Redding, and then our meeting, we meet quarterly now?
Well, that's what we're discussing.
Every other month or quarterly?
That's what we're, that's what we're in the midst of discussing, trying to get that organized, so that way it's publicly announced.
So the meeting's next week, if you guys want to come, next Thursday?
No, it's actually the thirty-first.
Oh, they moved it to the thirty-first, yeah. We have nothing to do on Halloween.
Yeah, I know, Halloween, that's where we could wear our costumes.
They said costumes optional, if you guys want to come.
As long as they said costumes optional.
They did.
Not clothes, you know, costumes.
Anyway, and thank you, Chief, by the way, for sending Lieutenant Betts, he's done a great job. He and I, he and I were the only two there that night, they had that official meeting, and it went late, and, and Lieutenant Betts stayed the whole time and even stayed awake.
And stayed awake.
He did a good job.
That's pretty good, man.
Yeah.
No, I said, nope.
Okay, well, as I said, I did, I did go to that meeting that kind of laid out the law, and it also laid out some options for funding for housing.
Yes.
That's what it was about, and the housing funding is mixed, mixed housing, in other words, it's not all just homeless. It would be some for homelessness, for reaching out and giving a hand, not just giving, and, and the other part would be for low income and for regular. So they're looking for funding, they've actually found a source for a part of it, so we'd have to work on the rest of it, and there's another couple of options, too, that they're working on, but this is the first I had heard about this. They built something like this out of Eureka over on the coast, and they got funding for it.
Is it under one roof?
Yes, well, it's like an apartment complex.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's mixed use, yes, and, and the whole idea is to incorporate people back into society with responsibilities and, you know, keeping things nice and.
Question again, I'm just full of it tonight.
Yeah, full of it.
Okay, so during this interview process for the eligible people to be on site, if it's determined that any of these people are not of sound mind, and they have to be turned away, where do they go?
You're asking a question that I have no answer to, and I don't think the chairman does either.
There's not much out there, that's the whole problem, is we need to have more and more facilities to, to take care of the issue.
And we're working with the county, and the county is, yeah, working on that, so.
There's just not enough out there until the.
And I know that the chief deals with it on a daily basis.
Yeah, daily day.
I, I would say it's probably, I, I want to make sure, first of all, the project you're talking about is conceptual.
It is conceptual, it's not being built yet, yes, gotcha.
I just want to make sure of that, and the other thing is, is that there's facilities and projects, and then there's strategies and people, and all of those are going to need to mesh in. I don't know, nobody's quite, no, there's not a magic bullet.
Well, Debbie, you gotta understand that California's legislature does not see it as a mental health issue.
Yes.
It's a housing issue.
Yep.
We don't have houses, it has nothing to do with mental health.
I know, that's, that's the messed up part.
It's a housing issue, and that's why the governor has, you know, is ramping up all this money, because he does not see it, nor does the legislature, as a, as a mental health issue.
Nope, they don't, that's the bummer part. And to add to that, you're, too, just real quickly, Ashland just opened up a shelter, opened up a cooling shelter now and a, and a warming shelter now, so it's, you know, that's gonna be in effect, too. It'll, it'll treat, or house, I think it said forty-five people, I think is what they said, they announced on the news.
Is ours opening again?
Huh?
Is ours opening again, not ours as a city?
Well, there's, there's, they're still under construction. No, the one at the Greenhorn's not.
It's not opening?
No, it's not open as of right now, they're using it for other things, so.
Is Medford going to allow, the churches that did it last year, allow up to three cars parking overnight in some of the churches?
As far as I know, that's still, yeah, as far as I know, that's still.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow, we have more than that.
Last time I checked, yeah.
And I should let you, council member, know that for the first time ever, and I've only been there three weeks, not quite a month yet, something like that. I left at the new location, new store, I left the Saturday night to walk to my car, and a homeless person panhandled, and I said no, and as always, walking away, he yelled at me, I give you money.
Well, then give me that, that's what you should have said. I need some.
So if, if the rest of the businesses down there get any kind of grief like that, we have to actually protect them. I'm okay saying buzz off, but they're trying to make a living and they're trying, trying to pay their taxes to us. So hopefully, we can provide a little more.
So we do it every day.
Yeah.
Our calls for homeless interaction with homeless is almost, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty percent.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, I was gonna say fifty, I think it's sixty.
I was gonna say seventy-five, actually.
The lottery, is that starting to ramp up again? I saw a bunch of people there.
There's people there, but no complaints.
No complaints, okay.
I got one, does that count?
Sure.
Yeah, the lady that owns Crystal Reflections, she came to the bank, and when she came back, she was very upset, because people were sleeping on the benches, and there was a stack of rolled-up sleeping bags under one side, and one gentleman, when I went by later in the day, he was actually laying in his sleeping bag, reading a book, so. Reading is good.
Yeah, this is reading, it's educated.
The folks who run the facility to, to call and ask them to move on.
Alrighty, thank you, and thank you for all the good work that you and your officers do, we appreciate it.
By the way, that was just my house.
I don't know how many of you went to the Flix Fest, the Flix Fest happened since our last meeting, it was awesome. They had, what, over a hundred, was it over a hundred movies from Thursday through Sunday?
I didn't watch that many, some of them were short.
Steve had a pass for the whole thing, I only bought, you know, several, and then, I saw the most amazing one called Blue Moon, it was fantastic, it was, kept you on the edge of your seat. And then another one called The River and the Wall, which was really interesting, too, about the wall between Mexico and Colombia.
Oh, oh.
And Arizona, and it was, the scenery was absolutely gorgeous, and it really showed that in some places, it's really not, it would be really difficult to actually build a wall there with all the drop-offs to the river and stuff, it was really interesting, a group of people that did that nine-hundred mile ride. Anyway, that was fascinating, and then I went to the Farm to Fork Dinner that was following that on Saturday night, which was amazing, it was all local products, all donated local products from farmers and ranchers, and cooked by a local chef, Deb Sims. Deb did a great job, and her whole team, it was amazing, and Kenny Barnes, so that was, that was pretty cool. Also, there was a car show in Montague and a parade, and I was asked to be a judge, so I got to judge some amazing. Let me help you show how to turn off that sound thing.
I'm sorry, it's my mom, she sounds terrible.
I'm sorry, okay.
I don't want her, sorry.
Anyway, I had the pleasure of, of judging, it was a tough one to judge, it was really, it was, it was really, they have some amazing cars.
How many did they have turn out?
Oh, my gosh, there were, if there wasn't a hundred, there's probably eighty cars here.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, there was a lot, it was a lot, and all of the fire departments that were there, and Forest Service, and Highway Patrol, and, yeah, they had, they had a lot of stuff, plus health parks. It was really, it was very cool, I really cared it. So other than that, I know that, I'm trying to think, there's more meetings coming up, too, but, and so we're gonna discuss those in, in our workshops. So we have a closed session, so at this time, I think we probably should go into closed session. City Council will recess to closed session to discuss the following items at the conclusion of the closed session. Conference with Labor Negotiator, Government Code Section five four nine five seven dot six A, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, and then, of course, the one that we just added, the Conference with Legal.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you, guys, bye-bye.